Welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular meeting dated Monday, August 2nd, 2021.
Trustee Molly, here, trustee Andreessen, trustee Coonsy, trustee Britton, here, trustee Saviano, here, trustee Triger, and president Ryan.
Here. And go right to the level three. Level three is to the fire of the United States of America. And to your father for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that takes us to our next point, which is hold comment on the geniuses only. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to vote for it on a geni? It's right there. Where is yours? Are you doing?
Right, okay. Good evening, and thank you for your cast support and your consideration of the Dundee Foundation's request for space in the Sunning Square Building. I am Trish Whitecotton, president of our foundation, and this is my husband Steve, who oversees our building construction. The newly formed Dundee Township Foundation and the previous township supervisor started cooperating in 2020 after seeing the needs of children and D300 and the needs of residents coming into the township asking for help. While it started as a collaboration with a foundation and the township, both parties had decided it would be best to separate our operations. The foundation is making steady progress in becoming a standalone organization. In pursuit of that, the foundation requests approval of the lease which is on your agenda. We have reached an informal agreement with the township supervisor to move our operations to the other end of the building and to vacate rooms both organizations have previously improved on and schedule it works for both of them. The foundation proposes to use the improved room on the first floor and to approve the other rooms it has requested as money and volunteers become available. We estimate it will take approximately $22,000 per room to bring each one up to code. The foundation fundraises through the Rotary Club of Fox Valley Sunset. We hope to complete that process over the next four years. All of this depends on your approval of our request for space. We are here to advocate for our plan and to address any concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Is this the town hall? Is this where we speak?
Sure.
Okay. But there's two parts. Oh, yeah, I think that's where you started, recent copy. The top part is just some points I would give over to the higher. I'm representing Dundee Township Supervisor Erin Brewer tonight. I have an extra to do. Um, yeah. And then, uh...
Yeah, it's kind of what it was on her. Katie, I don't want to stop you. We are going to have a discussion, so briefly give us, you know, just like a 30 seconds synopsis, but we're, it's going to be a full discussion item.
That'll work.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you so much. And I want to make you go over again. Okay, well, why don't we go into our consent agenda?
Do you have a question? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there anybody else who would like to vote for that geni? All right, that takes us to our consent agenda. If I could add a motion. I want to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated July 19th, 2021, and to approve the special village board meeting minutes dated July 27th, 2021, and to approve a resolution approving a request for a permit to close State Route 72 from the Illinois Department of Transportation for Dundee Crown Biscuit Homecoming.
Second.
Is there any discussion or anybody who have any questions or anything? No?
Trustee Molly. Yes. Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton. You have trustee Saviano.
Yes.
And trustee Triger.
Yes. And that takes us right into our agenda, and so now we can talk about it. I don't pay if I get a motion for that. Or like those discussions. Yeah. So it's a discussion of a request presented by Dundee Township and the Dundee Township Foundation for the use of village home classroom spaces within the Sunning Square Building, 611 main. Oh, Katie. Now, I'm sorry.
So I'm Katie Meyer. I'm administrative assistant for Dundee Township, and this is Susan Romano, one of the trustees for Dundee Township, and they're in support of some for the township for Dundee. So I'm just going to briefly go over these, this PowerPoint on paper. So in your packet, the second part was the copy of the original IGA between the township and the village, and then also is a map at the back which shows the four rooms we're talking about tonight. Makes the most sense for the township because they're the closest really, closest near the township supervisor's office. So here we have the IGA was in 2018. The foundation got involved in 2019. The second page shows how the building is used between multiple parties and is owned by multiple parties. The third page shows the township supervisors' concerns for some of the uses. A few next pages too as well. And so the township did put some money into rooms three and four. That was approved by our budget, is around $5,000. The township did invest $10,000 in a room on the first floor that East Dundee owned. The township has put time and money into some of the buildings that East Dundee owns. Currently, the township pays all the utilities. There's 10 units, the foundation uses for the food pantry, lighting, heating, air conditioning. The HOA dues have been paid by the township and private suite owners, and that includes insurance, cleaning services, elevator costs, contracts. Where is here on the building, including the carpet, walls, elevator? And moving forward, yes, we made a local agreements with the foundation, and they have to go clear out rooms one and two. Room one is almost empty right now. They've done a great job. The foundation plans on relocating rooms three and four. The township would like to continue IGA with the village to reduce rooms one through four. So the township is looking for either a donation kindly by East Dundee or a set purchase price, and the township would not make any improvements until there was a purchase. And right now, these rooms are connected to our current suite. We share a hallway. I explained why it would make sense for the township to have these rooms. The township offices are in great need of additional office space, storage space. We don't have a proper office or living space, man. Sorry, for, for men, excuse me. And we're running out of storage space, as I said. And also, we realized with COVID, we don't have a proper intake room that socially distances us from residents. So when someone comes in looking for assistance with a utility, this connection notice or rent eviction notice or whatever they want to talk to us about, or signing up for riding cane, the room we use is very tiny and we cannot distance by six feet. So we are hoping one of these four rooms we could create into an acceptable office to do so. And the township is looking to partner with local businesses for community needs like the Harpersville Rotary Fire Pay and Back to School Drive and different public events. And then the last two pictures are just pictures of those rooms one, two, three, and four. Do you have any questions?
I'm just curious. So the, looking for a donation or a set purchase price, I mean, are you like actually, are you asking for the village to like give you the rooms, like ownership of them?
Oh, that's the first ask.
Okay.
That's not okay?
I suppose I was understanding it properly.
Yeah, we have a fairly significant investment in this. You know, I, for my part, I see the village ultimately getting out of 611 altogether. It's, though, a space I don't know that we really would have the capacity just to give it away, so we'd have to come to some agreement, board would have to discuss, you know, like say, that set purchase price, what that would be. But the idea right now, I mean, I've gone through those rooms a couple of times, and I know a number of the other trustees has as well, and the condition of them scares me. I mean, frankly, I mean, what we've got is the public going through them for a number of different purposes and so forth, and the liability associated with them, just the risk that somebody could get hurt is pretty problematic. And so, yeah, I suppose that with an agreement that, you know, for the use, we would have at a minimum, a liability policy there would identify the village. The only thing it is is that if someone were really to get hurt, I don't think it would be a whole lot of effort for a talented enough lawyer to bring the village back into it if we were, if someone were to get hurt. So I mean, I'm not comfortable with going with the, with an IGA on this as they speak. The idea of fixing these up as we go, any work being done on the, on the village's property that we own is not going to be acceptable either. That's going to have to be something that we have to figure out, right? Ultimately, I think, I don't know really what the tenor of the rest of the board is, but I would be leaning towards, and leaning hard towards, so.
Well, let me just, I'm ready to raise. So first of all, if they were to have an insurance policy and meaning the village is an additional insured and the limits for appropriate, it doesn't matter if we leave in a lawsuit or not cut. I mean, it's a, it's a very standard practice on this type of arrangement. You know, as far as the condition of the building, I agree, but it's nothing that the foundation has done. I mean, the building was far worse before they got there than it is now. You know, again, I don't necessarily have any problem like people use rooms for not using, especially if they put a little sweat equity into them. As far as giving it away, no. That I'd be, I'd be a hard no on that one. We've got too much money sunk into that building, and to just give it away would be foolish. As far as a price, a set purchase price, I mean, that would just be an offer to sell if you made a deal to the general public, and one of those would be first come, first served.
Sir, any interest?
I agree that we're not going to give away, but I think that we have to, I don't know enough about the insurance side of things and all of that to, to make a reasonable statement about it, but I think we can do a deal on sale price for those rooms to the township.
So this intergovernmental agreement, is this for the space that is on the second floor that incorporates the township offices and the boardroom that currently just the classrooms? Just the classrooms? Okay, so the class, so this intergovernmental agreement was the $10 license fee for the 10 classrooms?
Four classrooms, and they were about to expand, and they did.
Yeah, as, as a part of the foundation. What is now the foundation or current class, if anything else. Yeah. I, I would think that the, that the township would need to put an offer in to take over, you know, at a similar rate to what was purchased for the area that they have on the first floor and the second floor, or whatever the market rate is for those four classrooms to take it over and add it into their ownership of that part of the building.
Yeah. The, the thing I would stress is that, given the condition of the rooms right now, the amount of money that would, well, here, what the village has invested in this building is of some cost. We have to look at it that way.
Right, yeah.
And no matter what we, what is required to put into it, $20,000, $30,000, bringing it up to saleability, would price then our investment in it well beyond anything we're ever going to hope yet, so.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right, so my thought is that we could just, you know, sell those rooms kind of as, as, yeah.
Yeah, as, yeah.
It's just asset. Yeah, I mean, yeah, right, right. Before I know, we're putting the cart away from the horse. There is asset to use the damn thing, so.
No, 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 I don't, I don't.
But there's, well, yeah.
No, 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 but as a resident, as a resident, when I look at my tax records, I see, you know, X number of dollars that I am paying as a resident to the township right now. And when I look at East Dundee, if you take out what we're paying for pension, it's zero. And for my personal tax record, it's like $745 that I'm paying to the township. So as a resident and as someone, as someone on the board who has to be fiscally responsible, that the township has, would either need to find funds to purchase or rent or lease from us those rooms. I think they were given essentially, and leased to them because of the fact that it was a, a founda, it was a philanthable, yeah, charitable foundation, non-profitable foundation that would benefit all of our, all of our.
Right, right.
But now this, now this is township, and township needs it, and I understand that they need it, but I don't think that we are in a position to be charitable to a township that we're paying as residents a lot more money to than we do to the village. I'm like that.
That is correct.
Yeah. So that's, that's where I kind of stand with it.
Right, that from township standpoint, their budget necessarily, there's more likely funds that either are available or could be for purchasing, whatever space it needs.
I would purchase, asking this, the one, like I said, there's no idea. Let's purchase them and kind of release the village from, I mean, they, they're rooms then, right?
Yeah, Brian, we, we have the.
If I could comment about that, though, there's one thing we have to think about in this sale, and we can certainly have a lot of discussions about the sale of property in executive session, so we probably don't want to say too much, but we do want to try to maintain, we have, we either want to maintain our ownership status now, which is 57%, because we require an association and majority, that definitely affects our role and our staying in the association, or we want to liquidate our spaces completely. We don't want to be stuck in the middle somewhere, so when we think about the sale, we may not want to think of, let's sell it for and keep the remaining 14 and, you know, because it may.
Right. All of that.
Totally fair.
Agreed.
Yep.
Agreed. So, what?
Yeah, and I agree with you. I'd like to get the village out of that building.
Yeah.
Divest ourselves from that.
It's, it's an asset that we have that, it's not like we already have come to use, I don't think, for the village, and with what we have into it, like I say, it's, we're not good shape with it, so. Was that all?
Mm-hmm.
Check. Uh, no, I agree.
Now I echo the sentiment of the board.
I mean, do I do think that if they want to use it while this is working, we can put that in just for the use while figuring everything out and, uh, this is, it's all good. Okay with that.
All right, so.
Sorry, I'm too drunk. So, so so far, they're cleaning out rooms one and two. Those are the rooms that have electricity but no air conditioning or heating. So all we could really use those rooms for if we were to use them is for storage. And so rooms three and four have had some remodeling done. The one room has two air conditioning units that are.
One through the wall unit, it's permanent, and one temporary. It's an award to the old.
So if we.
But the foundation would take those, wouldn't it?
Right. So if the township were able to use those rooms, then they could purchase similar units so then they could be used as office spaces, like I said, for an intake room that was needed. The township did get a grant of the state that we are working on, and we have many things we need to work on, like the cemetery roads and parking lot need to be redone, open spaces, trails that need to be redone. There's all these things we need to use this money for. So we possibly could have money to purchase these rooms, but I'm, don't quote me word for word, because I'm just trying to be here to represent my boss, the township supervisor, but if it was too high of a price that the township figured was too much, then we're going to have to look into alternatives because we're operating our office space.
Well, just to add, I do really feel like, after being made of this and having this tour and then learning everything right now about all the needs, that I can see immediately that there is a need for the township to expand. And I think initially, if we can't come to a agreement on purchasing it, because I think the supervisor, similar move is anyone who owns property doesn't want to invest a lot of capital unless they own it as well.
Right.
If something can't be worked out, I don't know what the future would hold, but I think the interim, like history says, we would still want to continue some kind of IGA in the interim so that we still have some use of the rooms that still need them either way. But this is something we're looking forward to solving some problems and moving forward, and, you know, getting the two entities separated and independent and so that each goal can be attained. And we'd like to continue this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll definitely be working with it, and it's, you know, I'm sure it'll be a situation that will affect everyone, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Study that too. I mean, if someone wants to pick up and find a new location, we can make this one.
I'm very excited.
Of course, goes to worship, y'all just give the ones to the village.
To be some clear, are, for next steps, are the, one, looking at amending the IGA to a hot or temporary use, and two, commencing negotiations with the township on purchase? Are we doing both? Or I'm confused about whether it's a request for an IGA and willingness to continue an IGA or not?
I think we got to take care of two of these first. We got to take care of the foundation and the township regarding their requests. And I think once those are in place, and the documents can be written such a way that, you know, I mean, obviously, just by the, just by the boots on our ground reality, I mean, conversations could start about purchase. Or, or what we would list those units for, because again, your view, it's all or nothing. You know, we don't want to be stuck in that kind of purgatory sorts.
Given, given the condition of the rooms, the difference between the four that the township is looking for and the other ones that the foundation is looking for, you know, as far as a lease kind of thing, I would, I would be leery of wanting to enter into a lease simply because you, you're not going to want to put any money into something you don't own that would make any sense. The condition of those rooms as it is, I would really caution the board to get into an IGA that would not include bringing those moves up to code. Now the question becomes, who pays for it? If we're, if we're going to keep it, we have to bring it up to code so that it can be used for whatever purpose. That goes completely counter to where I think the board and the village wants to go with this. At the same time, you don't want to be putting your own money into something that you're not going to own. So I guess the question I would have for you is, what's your appetite for purchasing them?
Well, obviously, you know, the foundation is in a position right now to purchase it. Would have to be at least a type of, a type of arrangement. I mean, the only way that that would be possible. And, and it's, it would be almost, it would be extremely devastating to the foundation to have to leave those rooms right now. We negotiated with the township and asked for a little time, but it depends upon you approving the foundation's ability to take some of those rooms downstairs and bring them up to the minimum code, which is what the two they've worked on now have been brought up to. But obviously, last year, the public does not really have access to those rooms. When we first started with the township, we had people who came into the township for help. They went back into, with maybe clothing or food, they were sent back into the back rooms, and, and that's where the four rooms were used, I mean, for people to go through and pick things up. They didn't go through, it wasn't like an open door. It was people who were already clients of the township who came through and went back.
Except on Thursdays.
Except on Thursdays, yeah.
When the food pantry flows across, it was open during.
And then so, so that's changed. That's not the case anymore. And, but it would be, I think, really fatal for the foundation to not be able to use some of those at this point. What our goal is, is to, to start to improve some of those rooms downstairs. One is already approved, and the township has agreed to, you know, sort of trade this out. Work from there. A lot of the basic work has been done, and St. Whitecotton can address that, because he's the construction person. The hope is, over the four-year period that we've asked for the lease, is that we will be able to pull together the donation funding to do a purchase, but it would have to be a lease to own, I think, of the four years. Obviously, the foundation is in no position to come up with money less the township can. I mean, the township, you know, has, it's a government body, it can become grants and everything, and the foundation's not.
And it's tempting, it's totally looking.
Yes, I mean, we're all going to negotiate.
So what I was thinking was, we could, since it's a property, you know, asset of the village, it's, you know, the details of what we would want to go with and any numbers that we would discuss with the attorney, and the needs to be done in closed session, but if you're amenable to the idea, give us a little time to discuss it further, we can get back in and let you know. If lease to own is where you have to be, then that gives us something to build on.
Right now, we just have to talk about that, that we want to use it, like basically continuing the relationship that it was a place, when the township and the foundation were unified.
Well, yes, but if we were to be able to get, my thought is, is if we can get a lease to own arrangement put together quickly enough, there may not be that big a gap between now and then. So, I mean, where an IGA isn't necessarily necessary. I'm telling you, Scott, I don't know if you have an opportunity to go through those rooms, but I am not.
I have. And I love you at the beginning of the video.
It looks like a bottom runoff in every one of them. And, I mean, I, I really do not want, I mean, I, I want an ironclad guarantee of whoever uses that space for whatever reason, that the village is not going to be pulled into a lawsuit if someone gets hurt. And all you got to do is turn around a couple of times, and you're likely to get hurt. I mean, it's, it's not good.
Well, again, there's insurance and identification, there's different ways, but well, you can't stop anybody from suing the village, I mean.
No, true enough. And that's why I'm saying, if we didn't, if, if nothing was going on in there, the likelihood that anybody would is almost nil. So I'm, I'm actually more comfortable with that than I am trying to piece together, parse together, an IGA that, you know, has any possibility of bringing us into it, into any liability, so.
We've already had them for four years.
And we should now, that's my point.
I would say, I would say that, well, I agree with that. You know, this is, this is the terms that you guys have presented to us. You know, if we push and say right away, if you guys can use those spaces, we kind of lose our burden and shake off this feeling. And I, and I hate to put it in as terms of, you know, a nonprofit, you know, but at the same time, I think, I think we should talk about it in, you know, further closed session and see what we want to comment, whatever we want to talk about.
Again, the foundation is willing to put, like Jeff was saying, sweat, sweat equity to these rooms. If we can come to an agreement on what the purchase price would be for these rooms, basically in the shape they're in now, and over the course of the next four years, we can improve these rooms so that they're more than worth that money at the end of the four years, we are willing to take that chance. But we can't improve the rooms, and improve is probably not the right term, restore the rooms to what they were without having either a long-term use or a more chance to buy them on the road, because we could end up improving rooms to the point where the building is saleable. And we're willing to put the work into these rooms so that in the future, because I take this as a perfect location, especially on the lower level, it'd be a perfect location and a great building for what we need.
Yeah, and I see that, and as I say, I'm, I'm struggling with the idea of putting in any sort of work into something that we own that at the end of the line, we're going to continue it all. If, if we know for a fact that it would be something that will transfer over to the foundation, I'm all for it. So we would have to put something into the agreement that the lease to own, that's great, any work that's being done to it that is on your part and, you know, won't necessarily affect the price, because what I would want, I mean, what I would. Because what I would want, what I would see as only fair is that, I mean, I wouldn't want to sell you the rooms at a price after you get done fixing them. You know, so any investment that you put into it is yours, that has to remain yours 100%. The lease to own agreement would have to be based on the condition of the rooms right now. And if you wanted to fix them up, you can, but it would have to be with the understanding that at the end of the line, we didn't purchase them.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but our current agreement basis that they were willing to put sweat equity expenses in the getting the rooms up to code. And then if the lease was, or the use provision was terminated, you know, in a year, two years, three years, four years, they got reimbursed, you know, percentage of their expenses based on when the year was, when the lease would have been terminated. So I very hesitant to do a lease to own that goes for four years when, you know, let's say circumstances may not allow them to purchase it after four years. We might have a willing able buyer in two years, and all of a sudden, these rooms are locked up. I'd rather give them some of the money back for their improvements to make them whole and sell it.
Well, those are eventualities that may or may not take place. It's kinda hard to put that into a contract form, but, you know, yeah, it's considered, we need to consider it because it's a possibility.
We don't want to do it.
It's a what-if. Yeah, but I'm not willing, I mean, Scott, we... I get it, but I really don't think "we" should go down that road. I mean, we need to consider possibility of getting out of this. I think it would, in the long term, benefit the village most if we were to divorce ourselves from any sort of ownership or involvement with Six Eleven. It's not a space that the village is going to get any use out of. We've seen that. We've had, we've had an effort made, actually a couple of them, of trying to sell the property with different commercial brokers. They had no interest. I've taken two people through it who might have had an interest in it and they ran a screen.
But again, I mean, we know this is not a very saleable asset. We don't, right? But bearing that in mind, bearing that it's a sub-cost, would we rather have the rooms sit empty and not get any use out of them whatsoever, or give somebody a temporary use? While, and oh wow, making improvements which in theory would make the room more saleable.
Yes, but the village isn't benefiting from that unless we...
The residents are by a philanthropic organization.
Well, that's an argument that you may or may not be able to make, like I suppose it's...
By giving coats, people in the winter, would be it?
Well, not, no, we're not gonna...
No, I'm saying there are people that have...
No, it's not. We're talking about the viability or the work that's being done.
But you made a blanket statement, residents are not gonna send it, and I just needed to say that they...
I'm talking about residents of East Dundee and I'm not talking about residents of the township. I'm talking about a village. So...
Do you have a timeline? Because you said, obviously, this is important. Is there a timeline when this needs to take place if you were able to choose? Probably yesterday, right?
We can't do anything if we don't have access to the building and have, and be able to function as we have in the recent past. Our board, I mean, this is new to us too. Our board is actually meeting tomorrow night. And so we're trying to pull things together as well. So the situation's very fluid. And we're scrambling not only to get these out of the rooms to making them for the township, but also, you know, looking at what we're gonna need to do in a downstairs term if we should, if you would, you know, grant our request. But the thing is, none of this happens if you cannot give us some temporary use of it, you know, with some kind of lease, I don't know, and IGA is not the appropriate term for foundation and village, that's between governments. But, you know, some kind of, I would call it a lease.
Yeah, the thing that is though, I mean, what I'm trying to get to is shortening the gap between now and an agreement that would put the village in with the foundation for a lease to own and making, if there's an IGA necessary, that length or that life of that IGA as short as possible. And so, you know, I mean, I know you have a lot to discuss with your board, but, you know, my thought is, is that if our goal, if the board's goal is to get out of Six Eleven altogether, this is a win-win for everybody. The village will win, the foundation wins, the township wins. It's just, I don't want to say semantics at this point, but...
It's always wins. They could actually purchase it. Right now, they just need use.
I understand that. I understand that.
Because we can't get to the parts that you want to get to, Jeff, without having a current lease. That's my point. That I think is important to make. That to get, if we don't have use of the building as we've had it, if we don't have use of the building in the upcoming weeks as we have had in the recent past, we can't get to the other parts because we need to clear out the rooms and we operate out of them and they're probably have freezers and stuff in there. So we need access and to build, not for the public, but for the volunteers.
Well, with a lease to own agreement, then can I ask, you know, as far as, you know, without going into too much detail, is the financial condition of the foundations sure enough to get into a lease?
As a prior matter, Jeff, if they're gonna buy it, they're gonna buy it whether it's a lease to own or a use for permitted use. I mean, they're gonna try to acquire. And I don't think we have to, like, shut the square patio around hole for a lease to own.
Do we have insurance? Like, is there, is the insurance for the foundation? Because that to me is the biggest concern right now. I'd be fine with them using the space if they were properly insured to protect it. They need lawsuits against the village. That's an issue for me right now, so that's something I'd like to...
I think I've talked about what the insurance provisions might look like, but we really need an agreement in place with proper documentation. And whether that's, you know, six months or a year, maybe if it's a temporary thing while we negotiate. I've seen if there are negotiations, you know, we have two groups who are negotiating. They have to end up with the same timeline to purchase. They both have to have funds. They have different abilities to provide funding. So if they need to operate for a period of time, we really need to have a lease agreement. And they have drafted such a agreement, but we really needed some more direction before even having, you know, the term review they gave. But I think you could do something temporarily, if that's what you require.
Short-term to get us through the discussions and all of that, and making sure that we have the clauses in place or handshake.
Because otherwise, she, they make a good point. They can't be successful. They can't show off with them.
You can't shut down or take possession.
But in the next... Maximum flexibility for the village, where you say, go ahead and use it. It's subject to us selling it, us getting somebody in there to appraise the value of the asset. Listing it, like just putting it on the market. It's for sale. Whoever comes. And if the township or the foundation want to work together and each take a parcel, a portion of it and get it done, great. If a third party comes and gets it done, great. I mean, our goal is to, you know, basically get out of Six Eleven with summer or whatever the address says. But, I mean, maximum flexibility isn't negotiating with these seller agents. Maximum flexibility is saying, okay, you can use it, but it's subject to if we sell it. By the way, here's our asking for us.
And that could be part of the short-term lease agreement as well, right? Like, that could be part of any lease agreement we have.
It's very similar to the IGA we have with likes now.
Right, and now we sell the property like I did like number days ago.
Okay, but we have to do the same thing with the foundation.
With what you're describing is that if we say, okay, we'll let them go ahead and use that with an IGA, but then the event, a third party or somebody else comes along and wants to buy it, then they might end up having to get out. And any work that they put into it to that point is going to be a some cost on a lot.
No, it's a clawback. It's a clawback to the current time.
Yeah, there's a...
I mean, if it's after the year.
Seventy-five percent, fifty percent.
Twenty-five percent is early. Well, Trish, Rich, and Scott Cuntsey have talked about ninety days. I guess what I'm wondering for the foundation's specific lease, as far as the IGA is concerned, before a lease to own agreement would kick in, how much time would you really realistically need for an intergovernmental agreement to last before you could start in with the ownership on it?
It wouldn't be...
Yeah, it's not...
There's no idea.
It's a...
So you're asking for permission to use the space. If we say you can temporarily use the space for the next ninety days while we talk about the terms over the next four years, is that okay?
Here's part of the problem is to make that right. We have to move the food pantry. So we worked with Supervisor Ford. We met with her last week. And we asked her additional three to six months to get a second food pantry ready on the first floor. She seemed in agreement with it. We would need that time to prep that room, to get that room ready with the food pantry. We serve 50 senior citizens and families, so, every week. And we need to continue to do that. So in order to do this, we need the time to move it. We do want to have the discussions because this would be... They have the township offices in there with us is an advantage because the, the... My gosh, I just... The reason for a township is to help people, right? They go to them, they have issues, and they help them. We're there to help too. And so they get people who need food, we have food. They get people who need clothes. We have a big clothing event. We serve 100 families, 400 family members. We have good purpose. We need your support and we just need the time to move the food pantry down. And it does take three to six months to get the rooms ready downstairs. So I don't know if that answers your questions or not.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be six months. I think it's gotta be six months.
That was kinda what I thought.
Many days is too short. I mean, things move slowly.
Right.
But there are also one, ask them to invest. The room they're moving the food pantry is not ready. So that conflicts with the statement you made.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, my problem. I don't want them to invest in something, you know, I mean, with an agreement. If you go ahead and start putting money into it before any sort of rent owns, agreement is put together, and then you decide to move it, you lose whatever investment that you put into it.
Why are we trying to shell the rent to own agreement? I mean, again, we can just list for sale. The pressure will be on them to be the first part to make it off and accept. I mean, there's good, we have a natural pressure there for them to secure funds and buy it. And if we use the same verbiage that we've got right now, if they put money in and it gets, the lease gets, or the permitted use gets terminated, shorter than anticipated, they even coops a little cost on the proceeds instead.
I don't know that I want to set them up to sell their offices right out on their roof while they're using it.
But try to force their lease to own option. I don't think it's any better. We're not doing the bigger thing.
They're asking for a lease to own operation. We're not forcing anything.
We're open to whatever you guys are comfortable with, so, you know. And it was, through the discussion, I think, you know, and that's something that we need to discuss. There's also another issue here that Steve Whitecotton can address more effectively. But in order to, the village will have to give permits in order to renovate the room downstairs to hold the equipment and service the equipment that needs to be serviced. And it involves metering and everything like that. One of the things that Katie brought up was that the metering layout in that building is quite bizarre. And so frequently, we had to struggle to know exactly what meter is running for what things. And so we're trying to sort that out too. And Steve has put in a huge fuse box over on the second floor in order, you know, to kind of separate those things out. So ideally, I guess an ideal thing would be, as you say, Scott, to just, you know, let us have the space at, you know, with a similar agreement to what the IGA language is and put it on the market. And then we will try to gather the funds in order to, in order to purchase it. Of course, in six months, yeah, we would, we would need to know if you guys are gonna do the permits. That's a huge thing and that's your village deference. We would also need to know what that, if it's a lease to own, what charge, what price you're gonna charge. And it would be, of course, based on the current condition of the rooms.
Because you're talking about permitting an asset that the village owns. I mean, so, you know, who's gonna pick up that cost? Is it gonna be the foundation that's gonna pick up the cost to do that work that you're talking about getting permits for?
Because speaking of costs, so the township is paying utilities for the foundation. So your decisions affect other things too.
Right.
So I don't know if our board is comfortable with that, that township paying for a nonprofit's utility.
Or any cost.
I agree.
I mean, I did a lot of time. We've already agreed. I saw Supervisor Ford, you know, is giving more time. You know, wants to just keep them out, or it's not the goal. But it does need to be sorted out and separated and then the township, we would have to talk again, our board, about, you know, if you're gonna continue an IGA with us for a few months while we agree with them, maybe for a few months. I don't know if that's the answer. We have to talk about that, that sounds...
Well, I think the IGA was a choice, but after we shut down, too bad everyone started.
Another point as well, for our last Son and Owners Association meeting was brought up. Maybe the village doesn't want their part to be taking care of the outside maintenance. Maybe they want to pay the dues as well. Because right now, just the township and the private owners are paying the association dues. And we badly need to replace carpeting. We need walls painted. The place is looking pretty bad. When the food, no offense, this is just how it is. When you have a food pantry where you're reeling in carts of food, they're dripping meat juice and fruit juice and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So the carpets are horrible. I'm embarrassed by them. Like I said, it's not their fault. It's carpeting. We don't have child floors. But we don't have enough money in association dues to, you know, lease on.
Well, is access in and out at, say, the north end of the line of classrooms adequate for the ingress, ingress for the foundation's use? Whereas you wouldn't have to come into that west, that north end, rather?
Yeah, I call it the west end, but I do my projections as well.
But it's, but the way east end, if you will, at the very end of the run, would suffice in and out.
Go for that.
Right, it makes more sense. Then there's a north entrance just adjacent to that, about halfway down, that would allow access for parking lot events or whatever. So with those two entrances, that situation we described would hopefully be eliminated. If that was, if it works.
Once the food pantry could be moved down, absolutely. That is a quick question. So, yeah, with the meterization, because what you're saying is true. I mean, why should you pay for somebody else's utilities? Is there a way to segregate the, like, the electrical and actually have a separately metered portion of the building just for the foundation? So that... Absolutely. There's a meter socket available and most of the infrastructure is there, the old conduits. We literally cut sections out of it to pull the wire, and I'm assuming to be, you know, recycled and scrapped. So we can fill in those sections that are missing and be able to repull. And there was more panels there than you knew what to do with. There was eight or 10 panels in the building at times. Some of the holes that you see in the wall are where they stripped out the cables.
So that you need any of that work to address metering or anything like that? Require ComEd to come out and change out some of those meters?
No, it would be to add a meter which we could not do unless the village of East Dundee inspected and gave the okay comment under no circumstances put a meter that it's not inspected.
No, no, I understand that.
There is a meter, a vacant meter socket available, and most of the infrastructure is there. And we were working towards that goal when we were working with the township. So some of it is already done, repaired. But it could be done relatively easy as long as the village of East Dundee, the building department, is looking at it and is restoring and not putting in new, or you would have to get an engineer for it.
Well, that's kind of what I'm wondering, too, are we gonna get to a point where, you know, ComEd has to come out, put in a meter to accommodate whatever, there's gonna be an expense incurred with that? And so I'm just wondering, you know...
The ComEd expense is pretty minimal. Because all they're doing is installing meters, something to start charging. You're gonna have to charge it normally. It's not much different than if you were to, you know, build a home. And once you've got it ready, big expenses get in the...
I think I've been involved with this association with issues for five years. This is extremely complicated and I think we're getting into the weeds. I think we just need some direction, some general direction, and then we can talk about all of these details. We're actually in a very good place, which I should have put in my memo, because the foundation and township have generally agreed to work together in this way. So all we're really looking for is the village board okay with working with both organizations separately? With the idea that we can possibly sell the building all at once together in some timeframe? What is the timeframe? What is the sale price? And in the interim, is the village board comfortable with proper insurance, liability, and everything in place? If that's the direction...
If that's the direction, let us go hammer out these thousands of details because you don't want to get into... They'll all agree with the association. It's complex.
I know it's detrimental for them to have this phase. I'm good with them using it for some small deal and work that. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on it as well. There's a note in the memo though that says the foundation is requesting at least four rooms. And I thought we just said ten, that's what we're... At least individually.
Township is four, foundation is ten. Together that's fourteen.
It says lease four classrooms.
That's wrong. I'm sorry.
That's what I wanted.
It is ten.
Okay.
Oh.
And the foundation would be doing it to like all of the rooms that are being used?
So this price across... Per room? That's per room, times ten.
That would be complete with HVAC and then restoring back.
But it, of course, doesn't address the county areas, the hallways and the restrooms, correct?
Correct. But for the upstairs, the hallway has been ceiling tiles, lights are on. Carpeted part of it is, the lower level part of it is already done. The lights are on. The grid has been restored already.
The bottom level?
Yeah, the grid has been restored in the hallway and lights are on. And part of it has been finished. Actually, the township paid for that and they're going to use it as an intake room. There's some BCT on the floor. So, pardon.
I wanted to add too, just trust me, I can't see very well. The foundation currently has insurance. And the village is indemnifying. And so the insurance issues that you were concerned about are covered. I believe it's a million dollar policy. And I gave the documentation to Jeff first so you can know how much it is. But it's a standard insurance cover.
Okay, thank you. So consensus?
Well, our consensus to what? The idea of a six-month lease and then we hammer out in the meantime a sale lease type of thing or lease to own?
Whatever it is.
We're going to hammer it out for an exact procession, I'm sure that's right. Or you're starting to get an intent. See tonight, but again, yeah.
I'll go and do a lot of homework, try to get some information for you to check with us. And then the idea of the township, I think they would either need to forego the rest of the classrooms other than the four, because they could easily do that. Because they expanded from four to the whole building almost. And then they can, I think they just sent a letter saying they want to go back to the four. Or if attorneys must assess, we would amend that IGA and bring that down. Which, okay. So, okay, we're going to do the easier route on the township IGA and then prepare it temporary.
It would be a license agreement for the foundation that would be substantially similar to the agreement with the township, which includes many of the indemnifying insurance. In other terms, we tailor it to the foundation situation. And similarly, it would be terminable, you know, thirty-six months.
So we'll do that as soon as possible so that we have all the protections available.
And just for the board's knowledge, the village's end of it, we are at, what? Fifty-seven percent ownership, basement? Each tenant, I think, incorrect if I'm wrong, is what, like $200 a month for HOA? The village's end of it, though, is considerably more. We're not putting in $200 a month, every month, like everyone else's. So when anything goes wrong with that building... Yes, exactly. It's on us and we did...
A mold remediation.
Mold remediation. So the landscaping, I mean, our end of it may come in one-off chunks, but we're more than make up for what we're having in a regular basis the way the other tenants are. So we need to keep that in mind. It's costing us far more.
One of the things I'd like to make sure that the agreement, or the license agreement with the foundation includes, because there was an issue where they tried to have a clothing drive and they were shut down. Yeah, for whatever reason. I mean, you can't complain about having closed rooms. You don't want people to actually get rid of the closed rooms. So maybe whether it's a location that they have to use, a particular part of the parking lot or whatever it is, let's make sure that they've got the right to actually use the property for their necessary purposes.
And the association has, with Sue Harney was present and we had talked about this. And actually, they had a lot more success in George parking lot.
Yes.
And the association discussed this issue and said, basically, the motion was that the current tenants that are operating, the township and the GALLA 611, if they're okay with using the parking lot, then they can use it. Because basically, it's what we're trying to do is avoid conflicts with the parking lot. Like when it comes to a wedding or a spa shower or something, that is... So we kind of resolved that. And then Sue Harney did say that that would be part of the lease agreement.
Yeah, we changed that in the documentation that I delivered for her. We changed that a little bit. We don't want to be at the mercy of just being shut down. We want to be able to kind of negotiate things. But the big thing is we have to have access to all the common areas, just as any other, you know, occupant of the building would have access. And I think, you know, to your point, Jeff, the township pays over $600 a month for their association fees. Jerome who pays, maybe $350 or something like that. The reason the associations and the building are in such straits is because we have a tenant who owes $15,000 in past fees and is not paying. And that is a huge issue for the association. And this makes a difference to you because you will be directing Jennifer how to vote on things. And one of the things that I think needs to happen is we have to put a lien on that space, you know, in case there's a sale. The tenant simply does not pay, has not paid almost from the beginning. By the supervisor, the tenant is not paying.
It's very complicated. And I'm sorry, it's taken up a lot of your time tonight. But here's an example. When they have a lot of donations to throw out of the trash can and then Lonnie at 611 has a party, our dumpster is overflowing, or overfull, sorry. And there's not even room for our few huffless bags of garbage to get in there. So it's an example of how complicated this is.
Right. To add one, so I can get to it.
So I think it's Jennifer go forward and Patrick?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And then, you know, they brought up several other issues. Those are certainly issues, but I think we need to tackle the ones at hand.
Yeah.
Or we can tackle some of those other complicated things like, you know, fees that haven't been paid and the structure which the village pays, doesn't pay. It needs to be addressed, but this is the issue. So there's a consensus then.
For use of six months?
A license agreement for six months?
To ultimately culminate in a lease-to-own arrangement with the foundation. Or a lawyer agreement. Yes. Or your, I mean, yes, but I mean, I don't know, can we do some more? Can we use or...
It'll be something probably applying to the...
Can I ask one question? Agree with this six months, I know it's all subject to approval. Should we move forward with the restoration? Because if we have to get out of the room in six months, if the township's going to take, or the food pantry is now, you know, time is the essence. The clock doesn't start ticking until we start working. And I don't know if this six months, I should start working now or do we have to wait till the end of the six months? I'm more than willing to, you know, to start working now.
Personally, and I can't say for anybody else, but personally, my hope would be that we would have this agreement placed within the next month. Not six months. I'm just, we're just trying to set up for you guys.
We just want to make sure that we can get what we need done in time for the township to use the...
Yes, for the agreement to be... Yeah, I would want to have this, you know, squared away as far as the six-month use for this purpose.
It needs to be executed. The license agreement should be executed. But I think the thought process is to allow you to do that within the license agreement.
And we will need to be working with their building department to see what their requirements are going to be as well, which is not money spent just...
Sure.
Advising.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll leave it at this one. Try and hammer out, you know, although people know the details. But the use can, I guess the consensus is the use can continue. We do need to have proof of the liability insurance.
That's what Jennifer has it.
Yes, I mean, I would probably recommend to not be open to the public at all. Basically, you can continue to...
Yeah.
Even the foundation?
Before the license agreement.
But I would actually like to make sure that any discussions going on in the interim, I mean, that the village is involved in those. I mean, the initial communication that was sent from the township to the foundation saying, get out. It's like, I think that should involve the village and I don't think that...
It was part of the...
Yeah, I mean, they were the tenant, not landlord. You know, we were the landlord and it didn't seem like that. We were even kind of consulted about it.
Or informed that that was actually what was going to take.
Right. So I would...
When that happened, Supervisor Thrower only had that IGA that said township four rooms. So she didn't want to be liable for anything else. She wasn't aware of any other agreements.
But again, she's still going to contact the village, whether they're new landlord or the acting landlord.
She wanted it. I don't think, I think she, we initially had an IGA with the, correct me if I'm wrong, we had an IGA with the township that for the use of four rooms. It expanded to thirteen. When the supervisor position changed from Trish to Aaron, it was no longer, she didn't want to get into the nine and did not want to continue with the agreement that we have for the four. What you're looking for now, though, is a separate agreement for the use of the four rooms. At this point, if for nothing else, storage. And whatever work needs to be done on that is going to be on you in the event that you can find in your budget the ability to purchase it. We figure out a price?
Again, I'm just talking about communications. Like if there's something, if there's any conversations going on between foundation and township, the village should be involved in those.
I think absolutely going forward, that will happen. I think it's been a volatile situation and now they're not coming for her. They're standing there that that will definitely be the case.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, are we, are we good? Does anybody have any other points they want to mention on it? Katie, you're right, though, it's a complicated issue and a lot of...
It's not easy.
No, a lot of twists and turns, you know, considering the building player, you know, all these different aspects of it are further complicated.
Just diamond has repercussions.
Yes, and it's emphasis on the rock. All right, well, we'll put together that. And it won't be hones down the road. I want to be able to get this, get everybody working, are using the spaces that they are looking for within the next week or two, you know, a couple of weeks. I don't want, you know, hones down the road. Make sure to get this going.
So, but we can continue moving things out like tomorrow. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Maritime.
All right, you guys come in, Rob.
I need to take a step to add a new precedent of motion. Make a motion for a number of video game permits for DC POTS.
I had all the opportunity to review this. I talked with Dan Hart. All state requirements are in place. It's just the village allowing the permits to put in games at DC POTS. I mean, I have long been a advocate for either repealing or amending the ordinance that we have in place that limits the number of licenses that we initially put into place because we've long since gone past that. But that really isn't...
No, 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 we never defined it that way.
Where is it supposed to go up?
Well, we put the limits on it so it would always have to come before the board for a decision. That's why we put it in.
Well, I'm saying it's like the laser license where we set it at no limit or a limit and we, every time somebody wants to, very good, ask for permission, by the way.
Leaving it out to somebody else, either in administration or the police chief as it was?
Police chief, police, yeah.
So, well, you don't have to worry about any ordinances that's in place. We're good. So I'm just trying to think where they're going to be putting, it's just their debate. Yeah, that's...
That's their problem.
That's their question. It's, they've got the space that they're...
The floor plan is part of the application property. It's for, and then also ATM technicians.
So does anybody have any issues or questions or anything considering concerns about allowing the gaming permits to go into DC POTS? Do we make a motion or something else?
Yeah.
In a second.
I'm good with this one. I think that that places him well already. I think this is only canal.
I hear, it seems though, I mean, all the conversations I've had with both Ryan and Frank Guma and other persons concerning it, they all, everybody finds it a significant portion of their revenue. So, you know, it is what it is. So let's face it, I don't have any problems. So, go ahead.
Trusty Molly?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Quincy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton?
Yeah.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
And Trusty Frank?
Yes.
Okay, then our next item then is C, like a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve slash deny an ordinance amended the number of class H liquor licenses for Club Royale.
So to be clear, the motion has to be one or the other. Go or...
We need to discuss this.
Yeah, so we could either withdraw your motion in a second.
I'll withdraw. So we should discuss this first?
You do like the presentation.
Yes, I'd love to hear you do that.
Please, but I have a presentation.
So you do have some background in your faculty, I believe. The representative here is in attendance. So Club Royale, here a good time ago. At that time, they asked for a banquet license. We did sit down with the new owners, express our concerns. The new owners are well aware of the past history with Club Royale. For the new village board members, there's been noisy disturbance issues for the history of the property. Some of it comes down to a single resident, but some of it expands beyond that. Would you say majority of the noise complaints have come from one resident? But this is something we've been struggling with for a long time. So we were happy when it was purchased and that there was only banquet license requested. Now there's a request for the entertainment venue license. They do have a special use permit that continues on the property from the prior owner to allow for an entertainment venue. An entertainment, I mean, concerts, karaoke, things with a cover charge, large events. So the problem with this is the building has never been quite improved enough to eliminate that sound issue. It's actually based, it's traveling under the ground and causing vibrations to the neighboring properties. It was a former catalog dealership, I believe, and it was never intended to be banquet hall. So we have no other class H licenses available. This was created, as well as, there's a code section on this entertainment venue. It was all created for this property. So we have none available and the question is, should we make this available? Staff has concerns based on the past noise complaints and also things that have happened since the new ownership. There have been five noise complaints and two calls for disturbances. And we had another call this weekend. So the calls are of all different significance. None of these should be considered major, sometimes they're minor, but they are calls for services. We also have an issue with non-compliance with outdoor soccer games. So we were, they did ask us, are we allowed to have outdoor soccer? And the license they're operating allows to have indoor sports. That's part of the entertainment venue. But the soccer fields are still set up outdoors regardless, in soccer field configuration. So we do have concerns about compliance with other codes, other issues. Again, the property is not conducive to noise. It's not, it's set up as a banquet hall or concert venue. If you get into noise specialists, they would tell you the things that you've got to do to mitigate sound. Those things really haven't been done. Which is why this sound is traveling. A lot of times it's, I can let Deputy Chief Stewart talk as well. Like, a lot of times it's, you know, the police officers go out there and it's turn the volume down. Turn the volume down. You find somebody who turned volume down. So the police spend a lot of time telling who's ever managing the function to turn the volume down. So it's not only the property, it's just not adhering to a certain volume. It's almost like testing whether the volume should be each minute, rather than just having established volume. And also, these property owners are new property owners, but were connected to the property in the past. So, in our discussions, they were aware of the problems that had existed. So, staff was thrilled to hear that there wouldn't be a Class H license requested. And now that there is a Class H license requested, we would either recommend to deny it or to take, put measures in place to ensure that this becomes a proper concert venue. Deputy Chief Stewart, can you comment on some of the?
Yeah, moving over the noise has been base. So officers are going and getting call back. We'll roll, turn down, music turned down to base, officers will leave. So since January, when I ran the data, we've been called six times for noise complaints. On one occasion, on April 30th, we were there three times. Which, as some of you guys know, sometimes we have one, two officers on shift, or sometimes three of the nights, and we're spending our time there doing this. Now, there had, we did document the one complaint, but then other times, there was other complainants or the officer. Saturday, it was again with the base, and the officer was there twice and they went initially turned it down, and they went across Route 25 to see if they could still hear it. Then it ended up being an open door, but either way, it's a constant ongoing issue that we're responding to there. And really doesn't help with location, because now we're responding to one side of town. If we do have an occurrence on the other side of town, instead of, we're going to be delayed. It was all for, again, either the noise or disturbance, and then with the soccer. We went there for a fight, in which you got in control during a soccer game, juveniles, and people kind of left. From observing the soccer game, being involved in that, so.
Is that outdoor soccer?
Yes. That was one of the disturbance calls.
Can you tell me, can you tell me when that one was?
That was on January 24th, 24th.
Oh, that was in the indoor? In the, yeah, that was inside January.
Didn't say it was indoor.
Yeah, that would have to be outside of January, so, yeah.
I did go past the property and I had to talk with Chris from the zoning department. The nets are set up to play soccer outdoors. Not put to the side like no one's playing soccer.
So, I mean, it's based her, but to elaborate on the concerts, if we're not, I mean, we're concerts with the other ordinance. Is it like large, like all-state arena type concerts? We're looking for like a band deal, a little band, some karaoke in there. And which is, like, right now, we have events for Saturdays, but it's going to set down like through July, after August. So we're just looking for a way to make the run in those. We'd say put sound panels right over the stage. We realize that the problem comes from the large banquet hall, because the smaller has absorption and it helps absorb the sound. So in the large banquet hall, right above the stage, it is covered with sound panels. We built a wall on the, if you're looking at the stage on the right side, you're, the other way is on the left side. And that has insulation as well in it. We, we did a call for, to insulate the roof, but we just started operating that call, it's like over $70,000. So, right now, we don't have the funds for it. We're kind of hoping at the end of the year, we'll have some extra money, and for next year, we'll be able to insulate the roof to help with the noise.
This was Club Royale. Actually, we had problems with it when it was, a year before it was Club Royale. And it just seemed like we never got anywhere, but the village was just constantly getting call after call after call. We're already through January, or July, I'm sorry. And we've had eight calls.
So I realize.
We had, we had eight. And all the noise complaints and disturbances, we've had, we responded there eighteen times so far since.
So what, what was it?
Incident or calls. That's definitely include alarm calls, criminal damage to property, juvenile problem, two accidents, this issue.
So, the second disturbance was the second disturbance?
We had two disturbances there once, with one on January 24th, we had another one on June 5th. That was a fight with a female who sustained a hand injury, and it was the fire department responded.
What, um, do we have?
Quick question, so there's a commonality of ownership between Club Royale and the Club Cabana, correct?
Um, my dad, who's the owner and all of everything, he was just owner of the building. But Heinrich was the one that controlled the operations of anything in the banquet. So they were leasing from my dad.
Okay, so he's the real estate owner, and then he's that business tenant.
Yes, with Club Royal, he was the landlord, yes. And then Club Royale was the tenant inside. Now, my dad is the everything, like the.
Okay, so, to some degree, we're, it's not really a new order, it's just taking some pay, putting a new sign in place.
Right, it's new operator. The property owner is, is the same.
My concern with this is, you know, we have problems with liquor court violations. Serving after, serving after hours, and I'm.
So again, that was on the bill. Previous ownership, we have not had any liquor, anything, I believe that we've been called out for any liquor.
On July 12th, there was a juvenile problem reported by the experience, small pink household fight.
On July 12th of this year?
July 12th, yes, but everybody was gone, and the officers arrived. July 12th, two, three months. We documented it as a juvenile problem.
I just don't think this village has had a lot of.
So July 12th was on Monday. So July 12th on Monday, we called out? We don't have events on Monday, so I don't know how.
We're in that parking lot.
Whatever.
And I think what we're, we're getting hung up on, one little detail here, we're.
Well, I'm not aware of half of these incidents that, you know.
You know, what should be, that's the problem. Because you're the operator, and we don't have, we don't have a good track record between your operation and his company.
Well, I understand.
Called in a lot, and we got called in a lot when it was Club Royale. Now, you know, wasn't that Mr. Jimenez, if that was his name? Yeah, and, I mean, I have no appetite for compounding an already bad problem of allowing a new liquor license to be created that's only going to cause problems. I really don't want to cause, reward, you know, behavior that has shown, been shown not to cooperate with the rules that we have by giving you a liquor license to expand on an already bad situation.
I think it's the stigma that's with it, as the owners ever with, like, we are operating the banquet hall. We are trying our best to, you know, this weekend, we were blindsided that the DJ brought all this equipment. We are providing the DJ, we are providing the equipment, and then, you know.
That, that's your operation. I mean, you know, it's, you can't put off on the DJ, equipment that you either weren't aware of or, you know, on him, because he was making the noise. It's you who's making the noise. And, I mean, eighteen calls, I mean.
Well, the, the, the disturbance or the, where is it here? This is June. There was an accident or something. They came from the, they actually blocked our entrance, and then they told them to move, but of course, they had to take our property so much. So when you guys came to our property, that had nothing to do with any of our gas changing.
And that's why we're downing, so noise complaints and disturbances, I refer to this as toll.
At the end of the day, I think they have hopes considerable, or in that our police department is.
Absolutely.
I don't think, I think, first of all, it's a deal, but I guess not exactly, you know, unless you're a great field. Then you know what you're buying too, but it's, it's, it's too close to the residences.
Well, and there just hasn't been a strong enough effort to mitigate any of that sound. I've been on the board for a number of years now, and it's been complaint after complaint after complaint. It's been an effort, we've been, if someone from either Club Royale, Bell, or Club Cabana, or whoever it is continues to come to this board and placate our problem, or placate us, then we're going to look at it, we're going to look at it. There's insulation, there's sound mitigation, there's sound engineers, there's metering that's going on. And guess what? Nothing happens. I mean, it's just time after time. And I, I just, for my part, I can't see the idea of giving this Class H liquor license to this operation would, you know, would be something we should do. It's just.
We don't have a lot of tools at our disposal when we have these issues, so we're taking them to adjudication. These are the fire orders, and we've received, or they've been set upon. And that's where it ends.
Right.
And we have to restart the adjudication process or find another avenue without resolution. So that, that's part of our problem, and we have some systems in place. We really can't obtain the compliance we're looking for, and I think the compliance we're looking for is this to be a properly built concert venue. We have a banquet hall, a small banquet hall in the 611 building we were just talking about, that is much closer to the neighbors, and we've never, in my mind, received a noise complaint. So it's, it's just that the building is not conducive. Maybe not to banquets, but for sure not to concerts, and you say it would just be karaoke, but any DJ type music is going to create that, that base. That base. So, I mean, that, that's why, I think we know it's going to happen again. We don't want to continue this relationship.
Not saying that it couldn't be.
Code enforcement.
There couldn't be a.
Right, I mean, if the improvements actually get made and the calls do stop, it's a different situation. But, at this point.
We've seen that, yeah.
I also want to make note that most of your officers would come and actually said, I know the traffic's all hurt, but you have to turn it down. I mean, they had themselves acknowledged that when the traffic, the traffic's on a lot of the noise outside. And I've asked, did you do that, do you make that in a report? So if we have something that's on our side, you can't even hear it that far. I mean, halfway to get guns, it's, and the officers are like, yeah, you know, it was really quiet, even here a little bit, so.
That's probably where that base that's coming.
Right, we are bases, so I know what, what these dates for the noise complaints is because I got the DJ, not our DJ, because we put it in, but somebody's brought their DJ, they connected. Our base, we made, what do you call it, like a case, or we imposed it with soundproof and everything to help with the vibration, so that it does not go. So when we do our events, it's our DJ, some of these contractors from the previous owner that we're respecting, and we're, you know, like, yeah, like this weekend, we're blindsided. But when we do our events, we haven't had a pop come out, because we control the volume, we, the base is in front of this. So, I mean, we're trying.
Again, I think that you personally, who's overseeing the sound system or the event, is not the issue. The issue is that at this building, at this location, the operations of it result in a lot of phone calls to the police and a lot of complaints from the surrounding neighbors. Who's fault? Anybody's fault, nobody's fault, is not a question.
I know, I'm not putting blame on you, I'm just saying that that, when we, we're doing it, we, we're, we are trying our best to avoid any calls whatsoever.
I appreciate it, yeah.
And then some of them have gotten away because we go ahead and need to turn on the sound. As soon as you walk away, you know, DJ who is from the party is putting it up.
But that's, I knew.
Exactly, but at the make it here, we can't tell that he put it up, because he doesn't do it right away. But we go to the DJ frequently, hey, put it down, hey, turn off the base. And when you're not looking or you're doing something else, they want the music to sound great and then put it up. I realize, but I'm saying we are trying our artists to avoid any of that. Unless it's maybe over the DJ, you know, who's not.
I appreciate it, I do, and I understand your situation, but your efforts aren't cutting it.
And then like I say, it's mostly one resident who, you know.
I mean, I would be more comfortable if there was already some remedial measures put in place. I mean, whether it's a decimal meter, whether it's a.
Tried that, we've got.
No, no.
Well, can you notice?
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be a lot of these put in place, like, you know, like, okay, your sound has to stay below a certain number of decimals. It's got to be this. And then, you know, again, we have to amend the alcohol code or the noise ordinance to impose substantial penalties. I mean, basically, it's like, I mean, you know, when I was running a bar down at college, I mean, you paid a ticket, it was a cost of doing a business. It's got to be more than a cost of doing a business now. I mean, because there's been so many problems, there's been such a drain on the police department. It's been, it's been a drain on the board, it's been a drain on the administration. I would have to say a lot more things in place, and I'm not saying they couldn't be accomplished. But right now, I mean, if you were asked to make a motion, I would make a motion to deny.
I think if they don't have us to have a manager on site managing the sound and it's constantly left to whoever's renting the space, they're going to have this problem.
And part of that is, is the same issue that you guys do with them. You know, you put it in your contract, and they, when they rent out your space, those have to be provisions in your contracts.
That is in our contract.
Do we have anything refined? You're paying it.
That is, I mean, in our contract, I know most of these are from the owner. But in our contract, it's like, you're not bringing a DJ, you're not bringing anything, our equipment's here, we can control it. But man, no DJ, no other band artist wants to touch any of their instruments, we can't. You can tell them all you want, they'll dig it, but they don't listen.
What would you have us do?
So we, we did take that measure where we put in our contract that we are providing anything and we will control all of it.
When is the, oh, the 11th?
Uh, we reached this in December 2010, of 2020.
From last year.
So it should have been these months that, you know, this is going to stop operating.
Again, I don't care if they're coming back, but I think you have to have some things hired out before the other third question's made. A lot.
I, I would just like.
I'm not saying it's impossible, I mean, I'm just saying there's got to be some things put in place that would take everything into account.
And you can put all these codes and restrictions in place, but at the end of the day, the police have to respond.
Right.
And they have to have a sound leader or something. So, I think what Deputy Chief Stewart is saying, you have to remember that this is requiring response on the wrong side of town. Not the wrong side of town, but away from some of the areas where we know there are other issues. And the police needs.
It's an extremity, it's a far extremity of the town.
Right, so how much, how many measures do you want to likely put in place that we have to babysit in order to enforce? That's what's happening. And sound, it's just very subjective. You can get a decimal reader, you can read sound, but is that what we want our police department doing? I don't think.
Excuse me, I don't know what, if there is one place, we have to buy the device and measure ourselves to have the control, I mean, to have.
But at the same time, I mean, we've got people who are living with strong inability, who's being shaken off their foundations.
Would you guys just say?
I'd like to go a question. I think we've pretty much overwhelmed the setting. To that point, I would make a motion to deny ordinance amending the number of Class H liquor licenses for Club Cabana.
I'll say.
Any other further discussion? Kathy, question.
Trusty?
Okay.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton? We have Trusty Savian, Trusty Triver?
Yes.
All right, continue now. We got our financial reports, and what's those, are you packing?
Yeah, I had a question about our, the financial warrants report, page. And if you don't, if you don't know about it now, you can just, if you could just send an email out about it. There was a $5,600 leadership assessment, is that for? $5,000? Page three. Dennis Paul Seldin, leadership assessment.
Yes, that is for the Star Kings.
Okay.
They're very, it's a classical.
And, thank you. And then, impact fees that are being paid to the Duntie Township Park District for Ewol and Maine and Lent and A55 plan?
Yes, so we collect, like, the deep construction, we collect impact fees for the park district, and we need to remit them back to the park district.
Okay.
But we just collecting at the time of permit, on their behalf.
Okay.
So that's it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
And this will be it. We'll time out to get to our off end of this. Didn't we talk about letting the other governmental entities build directly, and we get out of that middleman?
We did amend that with the buyer district. So there are other entities we can look into, like the school district and the park district, which we have that amended.
I thought that was one, I was, I was.
Something like that, though, or would that require a developer then, to like, have to then go to three or four different, I mean, because we've got about ninety layers of bureaucracy in this area. I mean, would that require them to go to like, five different governmental agencies to get a permit? Because what I don't want to do, again, it's a pain in the derriere for us, but I don't want to make it any more difficult to. any more difficult to develop in our town than necessary. If, you know, doing a little, you know, providing some administrative assistance, just so it's kind of one-stop shopping for permitting fees? It's not ideal, but it's better, it's better somebody being like, "God, it's just such a pain in the tail." Working a new study, obviously, they'll build somewhere else.
Yeah, in theory, we would ask for receipt of payment. So they would have to go to the other entities to...
Which might even be more administrative work to do right now, or slow things down.
That they pay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we have to rely on the governmental entities to do their part and then require the developer to come back to us to show that, yes, indeed, we have paid this, this impact fee before we issue our permits. That's just another layer of bureaucracy.
I think the buyer district has just needed the money more quickly than... Where the other entities really didn't sort the...
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on Lawrence's list? Okay, go to our reports. I'll start out with, I really don't have a whole lot, but then I've got to ask them to go into the executive section. The, you've probably all seen the signs that Rose are put out on the, on the weeds. You know, as, as silly as they were, as nuisance driven as they were, I, I do have it on good authority that they were done in jest.
Right, so now it came down.
I don't see the other one.
That's not jest.
Wait a second, jest, jest.
That's not jest. I'm sorry.
Yeah, jest, that's BS.
I will tell you right now, I talked to Tom Loeser this morning, and he didn't know it was a jive.
Okay, well, he told me it was, so...
Tom knows what his brand because he got issued a citation for his gravel lot.
Well, right, and now it's just as silly, so, I mean, I think it was just tit for tat, you know?
Well, when you get an office downtown, a house, walk away, get a house...
I also say I have various things about the direct direction of the employees of this village. That's not funny. It doesn't matter how funny he thinks it is, it's not funny.
And I also don't, I also don't appreciate him putting them on public property. Yes, he has them on some of his properties, but he's got them in, in the right of ways, on the sidewalks, on other people's properties. And if he wants to have them on his properties, he can have them on his properties. But I don't want them on the, on the, on the right of ways. And, and if they are on our right of ways, I think we should be removing them. And giving them back to the...
That's the notice that's, that's going to go to him.
I agree.
We have it drafted, there's, there's two different issues here. The signs on public right of way is, is, no matter what the sign says, it's not permitted. The animal club signs are also an issue. They're off premise signs. So any sign on public right of way can't be there, any off premise sign can't be there. So we are preparing the notice, Chris has prepared it, he did reach out to the attorney to just make sure we have our documents in our, before we send it. But I think we're all hoping it would just be removed. But I think they are growing.
And I think it should be noted, remember, that a request was sent out for, you know, let's say, let's even put a benefit down, you know, a legitimate concern about, or ask for review papers. And email was sent to Jennifer, Jennifer sent to Phil, and it was resolved with it, probably before they got to print the signs that they're putting on the first place. It was resolved in a matter of, like, two days, two and a half days. And then what I noticed, because they're down by my office, is they're moving around the town now. They clearly have feet. And it's like, okay, so every time Phil would take care of one area, they would just put it in the other. Put it in this area. It's like, come on, I mean, it's, it's nonsense.
No, I agree. I think, I think a simple request to administration could be made to say, hey, you know, to make, make any problem like that, make us aware, you know?
She did.
She did?
Yeah, she did.
Right. And I'm saying it really doesn't need to go beyond that. If it, you know, if something that is brought to our attention is ignored or whatever, neglected, then, yeah.
Well, it was also done when we had a lot of people in town for Blues Fest. That was a really well attended event. And it just caused more noise and more distraction and more, you know, doubt about the integrity of this village and what we're trying to do. And I really, I, I, I'm, I'm...
It doesn't help.
I mean, wouldn't they put out during Thursday, Thursday?
Yes.
Like, during Thursday, Thursday, they'll put out?
Yes, yeah, right.
And I think that was probably the point, you know, the biggest impact kind of thing, I think that would be...
Okay. That doesn't excuse it, it's absolutely...
No, no, I'm not trying to excuse it, or I just, I was just... Well, my point is, is that we all saw them, and I just wanted to let everybody know that from what I've been communicating to, that was, you know, the idea was kind of funny, cheap.
You were right, sir.
What was the punchline? It's the western one, just telling them.
Well, you know what? I actually...
I'm not defending it, I'm just discussing it.
But here's the interesting thing. A lot of people found it, it, no matter what his intention was, it's all about perception. And the perception was negative. It was negative. I did not find a single person who thought that was, that was interesting or positive in any way whatsoever.
Or necessary, or sure.
Yeah.
What Tricia said. So, so don't we have, okay, so, and, and, you know, with regards to the Aliano signs, we want, yes, they're open for business, we want them to do well just like everybody else, so they can have it on, but don't they need a sign permit? If it's not, if it's gonna be out overnight or out longer than X number of times based on our sign permits?
There were exceptions under COVID, where we're allowing businesses to promote themselves through additional signage. It was still like a grand opening. But that's over, and it never included public right of way or other off-site premises.
Okay.
It needs to be contained to the premise, and it continues to grow. We're trying to be respectful here, as we come out of COVID or back in COVID or whatever's going on.
Into the Delta.
But yes, yes, these are both separate problems.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be getting notices, and I hope that the village board will support it.
I'm just hoping this, I, I anticipate this is gonna just throw more fuel to the pot.
Well, and, and maybe to avoid someone more that feels the fire, maybe we start the phone call. You know, just sending a notice.
Oh, yeah, and Chris has definitely reached out to them. They're, they're well aware. But we can do another phone call, same. And, and notices we send are what I would consider be a cursing of us. Same, same with the lot, same with the gravel lot. You know, we used to put them on a door manor in another village just to make them friendly. And almost had like a smiley face. We called them courtesy, but the Chris's letters are really, really friendly to me.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but when the citation was issued for the lot, the animal club lot, they were given thirty days, just get back to us, let us know how you, think we can resolve it. And apparently, there's been no time to actually give a substantive response, but took that time to come in this meeting and call me a liar. There's been a time to have a bunch of sandwich boards printed up and pushed around town. There's been time for this, that, and the other. Just, am I mistaken at any point there?
The notice, yes, asked for a donation, it hasn't been received.
It wasn't even a, like, a on or anything, which is...
I don't, I don't believe it will be received. I believe the village board will have to decide, shouldn't decide what the next action would be. Typically, it's adjudication. That's typically the next thing.
Well, I talked to Chris about that, and one of the, one of the possibilities that is open to start is addressing that complaint is hosing down the lot. If that's done on, I guess, a regular basis or whatever, then, you know, that can be, that can be done. I would caution the lower board, because in the response to that comment, or that, not that comment, but that, that complaint, was one that was offered up to Bitchin' Moon about Duke and the smoke that's coming off of the smokers that he has there. And that is specifically addressed in the structure or the body of the complaint to begin with, that that's one of, you know, ash, soot, smoke, dust, you know, all that kind of thing is part of it. And so I'm just saying that if, if this complaint gets pushed down the road far enough with enough force, it could backfire on us, because we might end up having to make Duke get rid of the smokers. So if, if, if it's...
Right, this would trend ultimately to be ready, like...
Yeah, but, yeah. Well, and I, I also think, no, when you look at Duke's smokers in the parking lot below the gravel lot, it's not in the same space. The smokers in the parking lot below...
It was unrelated issues, not... One of the things as to why it's being run.
I just don't know, I think, I'm not a smoker...
And, and, just, I don't wanna give anybody the impression that, that the owner of the idle lot is the one who's talking about the smokers.
But can we say that's true? But can we say that's true?
We all know.
Because you can't, because, because he's been against that boost for years. Well, that's one thing, but that, but no, that, that's, that's not something that I can say, yeah, if you hadn't assumed that. What I'm saying is that I had someone else who was aware of the complaint mention that. And I thought, oh, you know what, I didn't really think about that, but that's a good point. So all I'm making is that, so...
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't...
I don't wanna get in a, in a, in a war with Tom Loeser or something like this. It makes no sense, and it does not have...
Well, I would be less concerned if it wasn't told me by one of his, what's called, representatives, that he was leaving the gravel lot as a gravel lot to punish the village.
No, well, that I'd never heard, I mean, I've heard it to a very mention, and that, and that's kind of a, a crappy thing if he was...
Staffy staff reports. Someone's still on staff.
Reports, yes. So, anyway, my, my report that is done on that, so, Trish?
I'm gonna go report.
Go report. Scott? Go report. Kathy?
The Blues Fest was, was really great. It was really, really well attended.
It was.
I think it brought a lot of great attention to the village, as well as people from outside the area. And I think there was, it was also done for a good charity, part of the, to a charity, for the Rizmians and that kind of thing. So I think it, I think it, and, and, yeah. And so I, I think that was a, a really great event. There was an issue, however, and I don't know, did we also give permission to Kane County to hold a private event on the ground at the same time? And, 'cause it's, the part, we did, we did.
The volunteer appreciation?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, I think the intent for that space, though, correct me if I'm wrong, is to have public events held by other entities that people can, you know, people from outside can also attend the event. And so there were people that were going over there to sit down, and they said, "You can't, because this is a private event." So, you know, there were people from, from Blues Fest trying to go over there and find a picnic table, and they were kicked out. So is there, I, I, again, similar to, similar to the clothing in the parking lot during the wedding event at 611, we need to coordinate this better or so that there's not two events?
The background is Duke submitted an application on behalf of the Health Department to use the depot lawn, because he wanted to be using the depot lawn. So he, I'm not sure whose idea this was, but he wanted to have this event at the same time in order to help bring people to his event. In addition, the Health Department people wanted to have an event, and they thought it would be fun to have an event next to a Blues event. So they thought it was a win-win situation. So we asked the obvious questions, like, several times, like, the application says it's an open event, for the public, it must, it's only rentable for public, that are open to the public. It was a government entity, and we were of the opinion it was going to be open to the public. We didn't know they were gonna put a tent out there. We also asked the question about alcohol going onto the depot lawn, because that wasn't part of the application from the Health Department. We were assured alcohol wasn't going to go onto the depot lawn, but there's a picture on Facebook that shows others.
Yes.
So I think, I do think that the Blues Fest could use some higher level intervention, kind of like the St. Anthony's St. Praise. A little more coordination. If, if someone's going to come with an event that is more grand in scope, I think we need to come here and vet it before the village board, because open camp processes in place, when it came down to it, some of those lines were crossed.
Yeah.
And...
And for no subletting of the space to another person.
Yeah, they do, they do sublet it.
The Health Department said, "We're having a Health Department event," which we thought is strange.
But then Duke explained it, well, we want, you know, we'll bring people, the Health Department will have something to do, and they'll bring more people to our Blues Fest, and we worked this out. And then Duke actually submitted the application to the Health Department and advocated for it. So, and it was a low impact event, we'd rather see the Health Department up on the depot lawn than Blues Fest up on the depot lawn, because the grass is so sensitive and... So that's, that's the gist of it. But that was drawn into the mix highly, I think. It seemed like it would be a very low-key thing. I think for the most part, it was kind of low-key, but I do think those boundaries were crossed, like not letting others in.
Yeah.
And the alcohol, I agree, across the street.
Pretty good. The trick thing is we have a problem where an event is so well-attended, that, that actually creates an issue that, like, needs higher level of involvement, I mean...
Right. It does. And, and, yeah, it's probably not proper space, when you just look at that little lot. I mean, obviously, we power you having this event, but the event you had a couple of years ago was green and hot, lower attendance, I think, in this one, so...
It was still, we'll have to make it.
So a hundred and two years ago, it's still very well-attended, I mean, a hundred and ten degrees in the morning.
But I think, I think there's some growing pains that we kind of need to address.
Especially if you got other requests, like, from other entities, we have to treat them differently, I think. Then somebody just simply runs, like the artsy market went to the depot lawn, it's completely...
Right, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so, point well taken. Thank you for the feedback, yeah.
That's all, Ken.
Scott?
Again, just not so much a report as, to Jennifer's point, I think we do need to talk about the issue of, we've got actually two gravel lots for our downtown. And, you know, due to a certain sensitivity, that maybe should be treated any differently than anybody else. But I think this at some point becomes a policy issue that should go from the board, and then with administrat, administration, then implementing the board's policy in that regard. So maybe that could be good for a discussion on next agenda. Okay, I have to do that, I have nothing.
Sarah?
Yeah, you know last Thursday about the water tower project? Do you have any good way to do it all? Did the board receive it?
Yeah, yes. I'm not, I can't speak that in depth to it, but this is a organization with a mission who usually reaches out to any water tower projects that are good to champion this IDPA regulation, I think it's like thirty-seven pages. Dixon Engineering was well aware that this would be coming, and that, that's what's regarding... So we can provide you with a snapshot of that thirty-seven pages?
Pretty great.
From Nick's.
She'll read it.
I'll write the book report, that's why. Yeah, I was just, you know, I got it, and I was wondering what it was all about, because we need to worry about it all, because I know it's hard, but full discussion.
I would say, don't spend too much time on it.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Attorney Smith?
Thank you. Your meeting two weeks from now, ladies and gentlemen, Katie J. will be here, as I will be at home. But I will be around between now and then, and I will jump around that much.
Good, we're working on the meeting. Thank you. James?
No point.
Joe? Nothing? Really? Aw, man. Hey, question for you. Do we have anything put together with, any sort of plan with Madison and Lent?
We have the fieldwork completed, we probably have a plan in the next week.
Cool. Fill's up on it? Great, outstanding. Okay, uh, hold on. I'm sorry, I should have...
Um, I don't have anything grand to look for, but I would ask Deputy Chief Stewart, can you remind them about National Night Out?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this. Tomorrow's National Night Out. They're doing it nationally, all over the country, it's where a lot of Washington City community get out, and we're doing it in private aid. Get out, we're meeting at, uh, five to eight, and I remember we just left me at Park, uh, we're, we're joining with, uh, a couple of local jurisdictions on it. I guess.
Are they in town?
Yes, so, um, I know I'll be attending, Sergeant Ritter will be attending, Detective Marie will be there, and other officers that will, free will show up to give the community a handout and briefs. Okay.
Need more village representation at all?
Just have my, say hi, appreciate seeing you.
I'll say, have you from Wisconsin?
No, 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 what they say.
Not a what for that?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes the meeting, and I'd like to go into executive session, so if I could have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, close the public media provisions on the Order of the Use Act, five ILC, S124 slash two, C1, personnel and legal counsel. And with the adjournment of the executive session and the meeting's simultaneously, we'll have us coming back in the long session.
Second.
Kathy?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triver?
Yes.
And President Mahoney?
Yes, okay, so I guess, right, this is, I don't know if I need to hear it, but.